He walked all over town.
Welcome, everyone. We'll call this meeting to order May 12th, 2016, Muscatine City Council. First on the agenda, roll call please Fran.
Councilmembers Raywall.
Present.
Fitzgerald.
Present.
Natfig.
Present.
Sosado.
Present.
Finum.
Present.
Harvey.
Present.
Fred.
Present.
All present, your honor.
Thank you Fran. Second on the agenda tonight is a resolution authorizing and approving a certain loan agreement, providing for issuance of a $4,550,000 general obligation corporate purchase and refunding bonds, Series 2016, and providing for the levy of taxes to pay the same. Do I have a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved, your honor.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none. Bob, how do you vote?
Yes.
Santos?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Allen?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Resolution passes with all ayes. Moving on to number three on the agenda, street tree review. Jim, is that you?
I handed out in advance a few sheets of paper. I think there's three of them there. First thing I want to do is let you guys know that that's not my work. I'll take responsibility for my work, but it was a list compiled by the guys that are part of the project development team and running the construction and doing the inspection on 3C. But with that said, we're going to move on. The first sheet that shows on there, down the left-hand column, has a series of ones and twos and then a 3A. So you guys all on that sheet?
Yep.
Okay. That is the sheet that's a list of the trees that have been removed in Phase 1, Phase 2, and then Phase 3A. And I just wanted to make sure that you're aware that, you know, we have that inventory and obviously at some point in time, we're going to be transplanting and bringing in some trees to replace it. So we have that list of where we're going with this. The idea, as I understand it, is that we'll be contacting those property owners and finding out whether they want them in, you know, whether they really truly want them or whether they want them in the parkway or maybe even in the front yard. In those places, all of those options are going to be available to them. I just want to check my notes here. Ah, yes. But even though, you know, originally our intent was to not remove a lot of, some of the trees that did get removed in construction, there's always going to be a few surprises. And the event that truly caught everybody's attention, where we pretty much had to take every tree on that one side in that block, is one of those perfect storms that happens when, as you go through and you do the utilities, then you find out that there's water main service lines and as those water main service lines go along, they hit most of the trees. And then because of the concerns about the trees and the tree roots that were there, Alliant Energy with their steel gas line got involved and the ones that the water main missed, boy, the gas line was just perfect on those. And so you're going to, you're going to destroy half or two-thirds of the root system of each one of those trees. And then just is the right thing to do because they're going to be in the way with the, for the paving too, is to take those out. We don't do that lightly. We don't do that frivolously. We do that as the last ditch effort. There's no other way around it. Okay, so there's two other pages and down that same left-hand column, you'll see that they're labeled 3B and 3C. And you'll note that in the columns more towards the right from there, there's an R or an S for streets we have identified that we're going to save. And this is basically how we have approached it from the beginning, is we go down through there and take a look at them and see what we think has to be taken out, what we can save, and we identify them as such. With that said, again, there are always surprises. At the 3B coordination, construction coordination meeting just today at 1:30, Alliant Energy attended and proceeded to let us know that we have almost the same exact effort happening in the block right adjacent to where we had that event last summer. The same thing, water mains going through. They've got water main services. We've got a couple of those big trees that are just destroying the curb and the sidewalk. And then the gas main is steel there and they want to try to replace that too. So I, on the north, I think at the north side of that street, I, the indication that I got from the guys at the meeting today was that every one of those trees is going to go. So we are having a big impact in some places and almost none in others. And I know that's not fair, but that's just how it works out. So, but every one of these, we approach the exact same way. We go out, we inventory them in advance. We identify the ones that we just don't have a chance to take out. We notify those property owners before we take them out. And we just do the best we can to minimize the impact. But with that said, sometimes there's no alternatives.
Jim?
Yes, sir.
Is Musk, Power and Water and the gas company replacing their lines in the same location or moving them to a new location or what are they doing?
The Alliant, to the most part, is replacing them pretty much in the same place. The bad news about that is that they're, that's in the parkway between the sidewalk and the back of curb is where those, at least those lines in those blocks are at.
Say that again, Jim, please.
Alliant Energy, when they're redoing that line and they're redoing those services, they're in the parkway between the sidewalk and the back of curb. So it has a huge impact on street trees. Water main is, sometimes stays in the same place, but in other places they have, have moved it. One of the positives that's come out of 3B that we're in now is our good friends at MP&amp;W are actually going to try and direct, not direct bore, but directional bore, some six-inch water main to minimize the open cut. And they think they can get through there and minimize that sort of impacts. I have a great grand hope that that has a big impact and minimize, again, decreases the number of trees that we have to cut down.
Well, the fact that the gas main is where it is, it just, everything goes, huh?
Yeah. But, again, that's just how it works, I guess. There's not much that we can do about that, like you said. So there's, there's the inventory of where we start on the 1, 2, and 3A. There's how we have addressed 3B and 3C. We go through the contract before we get started and take inventory. But, you know, there's always surprises along the way as to what we discover underneath the ground, so.
This, this year is 3A and B, is that correct?
3A was last summer. So 3A, and 3B is what's going to go on this summer.
Okay. So we've got 1, 2, 3, 3 years.
3 years of, yeah.
Trees to replace.
Actually, what you have is 1, 2, 3A, 3B, and 3C. And that'll be five years worth of work to replace.
Yeah, five years today.
Yeah.
And I'm sure there was, nevermind.
Well, in 1, 2, in 1, 2, and 3A, the cumulative total on trees that we removed is 18. Two of those were requested, were requested by the homeowners. So I don't know whether you want to count that as 18 or 16 or, honestly, I don't think it makes a big difference. You still, we'd give them, we'd still give them the chance to replace them.
Under, under 3C is the brunt of what you're taking out, correct?
Say that again.
Under 3C?
Under 3C.
I mean, is that the, the bulk of the trees that are coming out?
Actually, under 3C, we have identified, because see the R and S column?
Yes.
So, save, 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 save. We're going to remove, with the plan is that there's...
The third page is all removed, correct?
Yeah, so 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8.
Okay.
9, 10, there's 10 trees in 3C that we're going to remove. Yes, that's the plan.
What kind of a budget do you have for that?
What kind of budget?
Replacement.
I don't, I don't know what the, what the replacement budget is. I think that...
Not the contract?
No, it's not in the contract.
No, it's not going to be within the contract. It's, go ahead Greg.
I was going to say, it's, we do a couple of things. We have a contingency for each, for each project, but we've been very successful in getting grants for each project and utilizing those grants for tree replacement. And then additionally, the park and rec department has some large diameter trees, some oak and ginkgo that are appropriate street trees. And we're looking to utilize some of those larger diameter trees as well.
Great.
But we wouldn't do that until later, until fall, when it's appropriate to replace those trees.
Yeah.
Are those some from the golf course?
Yes.
Yeah.
Not the golf course proper, but the golf course nursery.
Nursery, yes.
But, but again, reference back to the utilities, the last place I'm going to spade a tree in is over top of that gas main. So, you know...
Only do it once.
Yeah.
I mean, you wouldn't even put any...
Maybe you might get away with it once.
You wouldn't even put any Maximus crapas bushes over a gas main.
I, you know, maybe something might be appropriate for over the top of that, but I, I'm hard pressed to think what we would do there.
Certainly, you could, these are usually street appropriate trees, but they certainly could be in the yard rather than, than in the right of way as well, depending on where the property owner would prefer to have the tree.
It's a good point, Greg. I mean, obviously, I really hadn't thought about it, but, but we would be well served to press the property owners as much as possible to get permission to plant those trees in their yard.
Yeah, we'll give you the tree.
Anywhere in there, front or back or anywhere.
Yeah.
We'll give you the tree.
Yes, planted for you free, yes.
And planted for you free, but we want to plant it in your property.
Right, exactly.
What determines if they're salvageable?
What type they are, how big they are, how much damage they've already done. And probably the most critical thing out of all of that is how close have they come to the back of curb. You know, if they're out there within six inches of the traveled way, we can't even realistically fit a slip form paver past them.
But is the contractor making that call or are you making it?
In, in the way those contracts are set up, if the contractor wants to slip form paver past that, then that's part of what they're allowed to do. The trees, no trees were specifically identified to be saved or anything else. Obviously, that affected 3A, 3B, 3C, Phase 4. We're going to change that. But we're already under contract for Phase 3, so we can't...
I just want to know how they're, I mean, we're identifying it. Is somebody, are we, somebody from our crew coming down there and saying, this tree, this tree, this tree is a six inch and we can save it?
Right.
These 24 inches, we're going to cut them and be gone and whatnot.
Right. And that, that's how this initial inventory gets done. And most of the time, we, we're fairly close unless there's a surprise, again, like the gas company deciding they need to do some work.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Jim? Jim?
Next thing on the agenda is commercial dumpster review. I believe that should be Nancy.
Yes. Thank you. We've all got handouts and I think there's some handouts back there if people can't read the slides up there. Tonight, we're going to review the operational and financial results of the review we just completed on the city's commercial refuse collection accounts, the ones specifically that have dumpsters. We've got a lot of residential customers. We've got some commercial that do not use dumpsters, but this review is going to focus on the ones with dumpsters. Just a little history. The city provides refuse collection services primarily for residential properties. There's about 8,900 residential pickups per week, all of the city, and that city includes now Ripley's Mobile Home Court. And we also provide residential service for the city of Fruitland under our contractual agreement. We provide service for commercial accounts on request. The average number of commercial accounts is about 240 that we provide service to. And the commercial, the frequency of pickups can vary from once a week, twice, 3, 4, and sometimes are five times a week. Of the commercial accounts, there are 73 accounts that have dumpsters. And those 73 accounts have 92 total dumpsters because some of the commercial operations have more than one at their locations. And with the frequency, there's 183 dumpster pickup stops each week. The solid waste division manages the commercial operation. And historically, commercial rates have been reviewed at the time that the city's made changes in residential refuse collection rates. And years ago, they were, the refuse collection rate was changed frequently. In recent years, we have not changed that refuse rate. The last across-the-board increases on residential and commercial were done as of July 1, 2009. And that's when we increased the transfer station tipping fee from $41 per tonne to $60 per tonne. So that's the last across-the-board increase in the commercial rates. We did have a rate increase for residential, April 1, 2011. And that's when we implemented the curb side recycling service. And that curb side is only for residential customers, so commercial were not reviewed at that time. So with that background, it's been at least seven years since we did an across-the-board increase. And city staff believes that we've never done a comprehensive study of the commercial accounts, specifically those with dumpsters.
Nancy, just to tack on to that comment, and that's mainly because the trash is co-mingled. We've nev, it's not collected, well, it's collected separately, those dumpsters, but it's always been co-mingled. In the past, we've never had a good handle on exactly how much trash. And Nancy's going to talk a little bit more about that, but it's always been co-mingled. The volume's always been co-mingled, so.
So our initial review process, and we started this right after budget was over. So we started in February. All our residential and commercial accounts are billed by Muscatine Power and Water on behalf of the city. So we requested a list from Muscatine Power, Power and Water of those commercial accounts, business name, address, and the, and the rate. We sorted that list. It was, they gave it to us in Excel, so it was easy to sort. We sorted it by those accounts that had dumpsters and those that did not have dumpster, dumpsters. And our initial analysis has focused only on, on the accounts with dumpsters. And then finance staff requested and received from the solid waste division, and actually the lead worker down there, Fernando Cardoza, a list of what his staff uses to pick up from the various commercial accounts with dumpsters. Those, so this included the names, addresses, sizes of dumpsters at each location, and the frequency. So when those were together, and we had Matt Went in my office, our accountant, do a lot of the review work to help us out with this, he kind of merged those two lists, the billing list from Muscatine Power and Water and the service address from the refuse collection division. And in doing that initial review, there were some issues that were identified. And that was, we did find a few customers that were being charged for commercial refuse collection that were not, we were not providing the service to. And some of that may have been clerical errors. If a business moved out and Power and Water just moved the same services to those accounts. So we have since quit billing the people we were not providing service to. But we'd also found some accounts that we were providing service to that were not being charged. And then we also noted there was inconsistency of the rates we were charging between, between customers. So with, after that initial review, we developed a plan. And this, we wanted this to be an independent review, so it was primarily coordinated by Greg, a city administrator, Dave, community development director, who has a background in the garbage business, which was very helpful, and myself. And from our discussions, it was determined that we really needed to, to do a fair analysis. We needed some actual time, actual waste volumes, actual miles driven. Before, we had made some estimates that we thought were, were realistic, but when we were done with the review, we found that some of those assumptions were not, were not correct. So we used a five-day period, March 15 through the 18th, Tuesday through Friday, and the following Monday. And our accountant, Matt, did a ride-along with the refuse collection people. And I think they, they all enjoyed this. It was, he got to do a little out of the office things that accountants don't normally get to do. And the refuse collection staff, I think, enjoyed having him there. So it was a interesting...
Had a short straw that day. Get a ride-along in the dumpster.
And for that week only, we picked up, we had routes, and Dave actually helped develop the routes, that were only the commercial accounts with dumpsters. So we really could measure the actual waste from the dumpster accounts. And we had never, we had just been able to do estimates before that. So that waste was not intermixed and we can actually get the actual tonnage from those accounts. So from that week, and we think it was a typical week, there's probably some heavier weeks, maybe some lighter, but there was 24.92 tonnes of waste picked up. It took 22.25 hours to do the dumpster routes. And that was during that week. And there's two refuse collection staff people on the commercial route. And then 181 miles were driven that week. And then, so some of that, the results of what we found for that week, and if I said this before, but our dumpster stops are 1.9% of the refuse collection pickup stops for the whole system, residential, commercial without dumpster, and commercial with dumpster. But that waste tonnage, that 24.92 tonnes would be about 1,300 tonnes annually. And that tonnage would be 16% of the annual waste volume picked up by the refuse division. So it was 2%, just under 2% of the stops was 16% of our waste volume. And that was what was very surprising to us. And our previous analysis, we had used, and I thought it was a high number, we had used 10% in the previous analysis, thinking that with all the other customers, that that was probably a realistic estimate, but it wasn't after we did the, tracked the actual tonnage that week. Tipping fees on that 1,296 tonnes were $1,495 for that week. And if we annualize that, it's $77,750.
60.
Do you have a question?
7, 7, 60. It's okay, don't mind.
Did, okay.
Okay.
77, 750?
60. It's okay.
Okay.
He did too many.
All right. Somebody's checking my math.
I did that before you got to that point. I was like, oh, that's not right.
We're, these are a week and gives us a good idea what the cost and...
Rounding.
It was rounding. It was rounding.
Accountants always round.
Wages and benefits for the two workers for that week, $1,534, 79, about $80,000 for, if you annualize that, and that's wages and benefits. Cost of fuel, $86 for the week, about $4,500 annually. So if we total those direct expenses, the tipping fees, wages, and the fuel, it totals to $162,000 on an annual basis. The revenue being generated from those accounts, and of course, everything's billed monthly, monthly $8,269, or that would be $99,227 annually. So our revenues are not coming, our, our direct cost of providing the dumpster service, it's short by about $62,800. And that was surprising to us. And a lot of that is driven by that increased waste volume, that 16% of our total. The next step was for finance and community development to determine what rates we should be charging to cover our costs for the commercial dumpsters. And we wanted to cover those direct costs and also allocations of indirect costs and some overhead. We have two cubic yard, three and four cubic yard dumpsters. And, and working with Dave and sorting things out, we kind of backed into that the 53% of the dumpster weight capacity was used. And, and some garbage weighs more, but that was the average that, that came up with the amount of tonnes that were picked up that week.
Have we ever done this before?
No.
So that's percentage by weight, not volume there.
Yeah. And some, there's styrofoam in some, some pickups and there's heavier things in pickups. I mean, it really does vary. So for the 73 commercial accounts with dumpsters, with the frequency, 183 dumpster stops per week. Final cost analysis, we added dumpster depreciation costs, vehicle maintenance cost, and overhead cost. The dumpster depreciation was allocated based on a 15-year useful life of the dumpster. Vehicle maintenance and overhead was allocated based on the ratio of the commercial dumpster accounts, commercial dumpster account stops to the total stops by the refuse division. So basically, 183... So basically, 183 out of 9,496. So a very small percentage of the overhead was allocated in the vehicle maintenance cost. So from that, again, trying to cover our costs, direct costs and overhead costs, we've developed a proposed rate schedule. And this would be for each of the two, three, and four yard dumpster sizes for the number of pickups each week. And these would be the monthly rates, which is how we charge refuse collection.
Are those dumpsters, dumpsters city-owned?
And if you look at that schedule, we're giving a little price break for the second through the fifth stop during a week. There are some costs that don't go up. The dumpster depreciation, it would be once, no matter if it was picked up once a week or five times a week. And some of the overhead costs are based on the, are not allocated to the second through the fifth pickup. So, and that's, I think it was $5 less for the second through the fifth for two yards, six for the three yard, and $7 less for the four cubic yard. And Dave and I went back and forth on this and came to an agreement, something that made some sense. If we look at that chart, though, there's, the proposed rates are higher than what we're currently charging for most of the customers, and some are significantly higher.
Is this just a break-even type of fee?
This would be break-even. The city, we used FY17's budget, next fiscal year's budget, so we're current with that. But we, as a city, we don't build in profit, that type of thing, where a private business would. This would be covering our costs. But that would include, you know, amount that would go to the overhead of the operation.
Do you have any idea how these rates compare to private pickups?
We had some information, and it's, we're not sure if what we had, though, included their equipment costs, their dumpster costs. But it was similar to one of them. Some of them have bigger price breaks for the more frequent pickups each week. And we discussed that, and it really doesn't make sense because each dumpster stop has a cost to the city. So it depends on how private businesses would set their rate schedules.
Okay.
Do you take into consideration that, I mean, if you're getting picked up, if that dumpster's being picked up daily, five times a week, just the sheer wear and tear on that dumpster over a year is going to be considerable more than what it would be if that dumpster was picked up once a week. And so replacement, replacement costs, I would, I'd have to venture to guess. Somebody that's into dumpsters would know. But just that constant, each day, your flip on the dumpster.
To your point, though, back three pages, when you see that 53% of the dumpsters, let's see, let me read this here. And also, an average of weight capacity used in the dumpsters was at 53%. So part of the problem is that these dumpsters are not right-sized for the business. And that would have to be part of the process, is that you right-size the dumpsters. So maybe they don't need to be picked up as frequency, as frequent. Or maybe their dumpster size is incorrect. Or maybe if they have a two yard, and it's, they're really only using a yard, they could use two carts, and we reduce our overhead costs significantly by using the automatic arm. So there's, that would be any, part of any process. And actually, it's later in the slide, and I'm jumping ahead, sorry.
You always read the last chapter first. And I'm not sure, Dave might know if dumpsters last, last time if they're picked up more frequently. I really don't know.
They can be faster. They do last into 20 years, depending upon how you spend that. So 15 years is a very good number. The frequency of pickup is less an issue than must. That seems to be the case.
Good. And if you, if they have a two yard, and they're getting it picked up every day, and maybe they can go to a four yard and get it picked up once a week, depending on what they're putting in it. If it's food stuff, then that might not be an issue.
That would be an individual conversation with each of the customers to try and right-size the frequency and the size of the container. But again, I'm jumping ahead.
Are we looking at wanting to raise the rates then for these commercials?
Maybe I should let Nancy finish here.
To be continued.
Yeah, we'll get to that part in a slide or two. The city code does provide that the city council approves, sets residential refuse collection rates by resolution. And that's been done when we have raised rates, but we haven't raised rates for a number of years. For commercial accounts, the city code provides that city council establishes guidelines for collection fees for the commercial accounts. Because there are some probably more unusual circumstances. There are the multiple times that we pick up. There's probably some that are maybe seasonal type, have more seasonally. So our proposed steps at this point for implementing changes to commercial accounts with dumpsters. The initial review we're doing with council now to gather your feedback tonight, and if, and we may have subsequent meetings on this. We also want to review this with the chamber landfill committee because if it results in a reduction of waste volume, that also impacts the transfer station fund and the landfill. So it could have impacts on all three of our solid waste funds. But our proposal is to adopt a new rate card when this review is done. You know, a standardized rate card. And I think I say it later, but allow for some documented variations for special circumstances of customers if it's needed. To implement it, we're proposing that we contact each of the commercial dumpster accounts. And probably the first initial contact would be by letter, saying, this is your current services. You have this size of dumpster. We're picking you up once a week, twice a week, three times a week. And per the new rate card, your charge would go from X to whatever for the, under the new rate card. With that letter, we would also offer them, as Greg was saying before, if they're right-sized. So if somebody had a two cubic yard dumpster and could get by with two refuse carts instead, they would save money, and it may be a win for them, too. If, or they can also look at changing their frequency of pickup or the size of their dumpsters, you know, so they would have a chance to review that. Commercial customers would also have the option of looking at other providers of refuse collection services. We're proposing that the initial contact be by letter, and then followed up with personal meetings if the customers were interested in that to discuss options. And we're proposing that they be given a 60 to 90-day period. And if they're fine with the new rate, then we would communicate that the rates to Muscatine Power to change the billing amount. That 16 to 90 days, though, would be for the initial one. Commercial accounts, they have the option of looking for other providers whenever they'd like. So if they, six months down the road, if they decided to look for other providers, they were, they have the right to do that. As I mentioned previously, we would like a standard rate card. But there may be reasons for deviations from it, and that those should be specifically documented. If we, for instance, if, for the school accounts, you know, it's picked up daily during the school year, and I'm not sure if it's weekly, probably weekly during the summer. So it does vary, and we would have to allow for that kind of deviation. I think there's some other locations where a person might have two, two, two cubic yard dumpsters just because they're, a four yard wouldn't fit in that location. So a consideration could be given to that, too. And some of those will arise as we're discussing things with customers. But we want to standardize the rates and then document any exceptions that were found to be needed. With the increased rates, and some are significant, we will likely lose some of our customers and potentially have a reduction in waste volume to the transfer station and landfill. If some of the customers chose a different service for refuse collection, some of that waste may still come to the transfer station, but we won't know that. So it would be something that would need to be evaluated after it was implemented. With the accounts that are retained, though, our rates would be covering the cost of providing them services with a proposed rate card. And then just kind of in summary, and to kind of wrap up this. Refuse collection, it's a separate fund, and its revenue should pay for its expenses. But in this case, a change in the refuse collection will likely impact the transfer station and landfill funds as well. And as far as, we can only estimate what that impact can be at this point until it would be sorted out. We did, just for an example, if we would lose 50% of our revenue from the commercial dumpster accounts, the revenue from the remaining accounts would be a little higher than our current revenues. So we're undercharging, our rates are that far under what they should be.
We're losing money anyway right now, is what you're saying.
We are, we're losing money now. But under, under a new rate schedule.
You said 60 to 90 days. I mean, hypothetically, we're already, you know, in May. If we were to do something, it probably wouldn't go into effect till September.
Yeah, and some of it is, though.
We're gonna go right into the next year's budget, so I mean.
Yeah, and we want to implement something that's workable as well and that people agree with. And having the landfill committee look at it is another area to bounce that off because they've been, involves a lot in eliminating that deficit in the landfill fund.
I guess, if I was to summarize, this is one, this is one solution, is to adopt a rate card with a similar structure, and you can take these steps to bring it forward. You know, however, there are impacts. You know, whether we stay in the business, whether we get out of the business, there are impacts to those small businesses and those customers. So do you implement the rate card immediately? Do the 60 to 90s? Do you do it over time? Do you narrow the gap? Do you, I mean, there could be other solutions or steps. This is, this is the initial discussion. We want to start getting the information out there and getting feedback. The landfill committee's been a great resource in the past. We've helped eliminate the deficit at the landfill. We've got some issues we talked about at the, during the budget process with the transfer station that we want to tackle. Because of the landfill plan, this is, this is an obvious component piece because the landfill, the transfer station, refuse, they're all interrelated activities and funds. And so our next step, or one of our next steps would be to visit the topic with the chamber landfill committee and then also come back to council for, as you can digest this, take a look at it and see, formulate your own questions and ideas and comments and thoughts.
And it would be, if this is adopted and put into place, we would probably plan on doing next spring another just refuse, commercial dumpster account. You know, track, track what waste volume we have, how much time it takes with whatever accounts we have at the time. And then could make further discussion, decisions as far as the future of the commercial dumpster business for the city.
The last, the last time I checked, which is a number, quite a number of years ago, in getting a dumpster, because I was on Hershey Avenue and still doing construction work, and I wanted, I thought, well, I can do a dumpster. I was willing to go with the city, but the city was so restrictive. Anything I brought to that dumpster from a construction site, I couldn't put in it. So I was like, hell, why would I, this isn't gonna work. And so the, the other contractors, the other dumpster people basically allow anything to go in theirs. And I was told at the time that, you know, well, you shove a two-by-four out through the side of the packer when it's packing. Well, possibly, but if you, I, and I've never run a garbage truck, but the back of that machine is pretty powerful. I think if you, if you load it correctly with it, I think it'll do it. I could be wrong. I think we need to look at what we're putting in it and allowing people to put in it. I think we need to take a good, hard look at what the commercial companies charge. We have, a friend of mine put a dumpster at our farm in Story County, and it's $50 a dump. I says, is there some residual for so much a month to keep this, to have it? And he goes, no, 50 bucks a month, or 50 bucks for every dump. And if it could be weekly, it could be three, three times a month, it could be once a month.
I'm not aware that we have any dumpsters we put out temporarily for construction. I think we're.
No roll-offs, I know. They don't take construction debris.
Yeah, so it's, and ease of billing, too. Most of ours are a set monthly, monthly fee just because of the number of customers.
And maybe the dumpsters, we take the people that we have commercial accounts with, maybe we don't have Power and Water do the billing. We do it within the city's accounting department and take care of it that way. That way, we have a little better control on who's paying what, when, and where. Just a thought.
Can be considered. Some of it, though, again, it's the primary purpose, primary service is the residential customers and to spend a lot of staff time on individual accounts that aren't part of the normal system.
But do we charge them anything additional if a residential customer wants two of the biggest dump, the containers that we can get?
We don't allow for, you only get one cart.
Well, we're gonna give commercial accounts, too.
Right. Only when we're looking to right-size. So if somebody had a two yard, and they were filling it up, filling 50% of it up. If we could take a commercial account and give them two carts, you can pick those up in 15 seconds. Those things are moving pretty quick. It's a much more efficient operation.
I understand that.
Right.
But as a, but as a residential customer, if I wanted, if I wanted a two, I can't have two.
At present, no.
I thought we could.
Two sizes.
That's why we, that's why we have the large.
I know, there's, I know.
Greg, you need, first of all, I know how much work has gone into this by Nancy, and Matt, and Fernando, and David, and you, and everybody involved. And we appreciate it. Clearly, we know what it's gonna take to break even with the new rates. What should be our pleasure, to implement the rates now and then worry about the rest of it? of it? Because you want to get that rolling. Every day we don't get it rolling, we're losing more money, right?
We, we do, but, you know, in some conversations earlier today, in, you know, in preparation, we have our first landfill committee meeting tomorrow, and that's our annual, usually annual process to update the, the committee on the landfill and transfer station and then bring it forward to council as the follow-up meeting to, to show the status of the fund balance for the landfill and transfer station. And we were gonna bring back some items on the transfer. And one of the issues comes is, you know, this is a dramatic impact on, on, on customers and, and small business. And so how do you implement it? Do you do it over time? Do you, do you narrow the, narrow the gap, we, you know, at this point in time? I mean, what, what are the solutions? And that's, that's really what we're looking for. You know, we've got multiple heads here that can, that can be put to the task. We'd like to put the committee to the task as well and come back with a recommendation on how to proceed.
You'll have those by next Thursday?
Well, tomorrow's just transfer station and landfill, and then we'll set up a follow-up meeting on this specific.
This is for the chamber?
Yes, right. And then we'll, we'll work with Greg to set up a follow-up meeting on this particular topic.
I think we do, you know, this is reality, and if we do it phased in, each phase, they'll be screaming and yelling at each phase. And, which I understand.
Get a one, one yell?
Yeah, this is reality, and the other part of the reality is their friends and neighbors have been subsidizing them for years.
Right, right.
And you gotta send them a thank you note and scream at us and throw bricks, but this is reality.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Greg, did you or Nancy mention, you think there may be cases where you can even go to the, even smaller yet and use a totally articulated, a new truck?
Yeah, so, so for example, a few pages back, it showed, you know, on an average weight. So we don't know for each customer. We want to go talk to the customer and if, if they have a two yard and they've only, they're only filling it up, half of it on most days, they could use two carts. And that's gonna dramatically reduce our, our overhead costs, because it, you know, with the new automated system, it, it's very efficient and literally, literally takes probably, I stood out there and watched them, 15 seconds to drive up, arm down, pull, dump it and go onto the next one. So it would be much more efficient operation than moving the dumpster out.
So in those cases, it wouldn't be losing it to someone else, it'd be just residential.
Right, picking it up is part of it, as part of it, more of the residential program.
Did you do a ride-along?
I was, I was watching, yeah.
Watch, one.
I was watching, yeah. Matt thoroughly enjoyed the ride-along.
Really?
Something different, something different.
But, so this, this kind of gives you the, the analysis and the kind of the next step is, you know, what, what are those next steps? And, and that's what we'd like to bring some recommendations is back to council and, and give you an opportunity to think about those solutions as well.
Well, like you said, the committee was very useful last time, and I think it would be this time, too.
Very, very, very useful, and we've made progress. The, in short, the landfill is, is operating as a positive fund balance and should be able to cash flow the, the next phase, we'll be able to cash flow the next phase of the, of the cell five. However, everything is interrelated. As you said, it was a successful, successful program last time, and we'd like to continue that as well, so. Introduce the topic tonight, give you time to digest it, think about, think about it and then come back with some additional discussion.
I think it'd be, I think it'd be interesting to know what the people who do not use our service, what they're paying for, what they're getting, and maybe the, through the chamber, we could get some idea that, you know, what are they spending for dumping work?
Dave, Dave.
Because I'd hate to be the low, low guy on the list necessarily.
If you're the wrong price, you're not going to have it.
As Dave's walking up there, Dave's done some comparables with some, with some area companies and, and if you, if you assume the, that the equipment costs are not included in the rate structure, it makes our sys, makes our rates very comparable with those three. Other than two of them have reduced costs, so the more you pick up, so for, for example, if you pick up five, you're getting to, they're given a substantial discount in, in the three, four and five day pickup. But I'm not sure how we could do that and, and keep our cost.
To answer your question maybe a little differently, is that I looked, I called and because of my knowledge of this, I was able to pinpoint them on specific service and disposal costs for each size and each frequency, so that we'd have comparable models between three different commercial providers. Not, not every one of them. I didn't go to some other ones. I went to the ones that are reputable, credible providers right now. And then I averaged them out. We are, you'll see, there, there would be a, a pattern, and I can't remember the exact pattern, but there was a certain segment where we're very competitive, maybe on the, on the first frequency, first one or two pickups, and then it starts creeping and deviating from each other. So in, in any case, if we make a change to try to break even, no matter what we do, whether we tweak accounts, do all kinds of shenanigans, the point is, customers are gonna pay more in order to just get things to break even. And if, even if they leave us, they're gonna pay more than what they're paying now. So that gives you some sense of scale. I hope that helps.
Dave, the proposed rates, how do they compare with the commercial rates that you, you found when you called around?
Well, none of the commercial rates I was given included the equipment. They include, and I was able to delineate from the, the fees that they said that they charged, how much of that was disposal and how much of that was service. So I was able to, to actually get two pieces for each price. And it gave us some sense of comparison internally here as how we compare it, $60 a ton versus a different rate and all those kinds of things. We haven't gone through that lengthy analysis. We, we did exactly what we said that we did for this analysis, but there are many phases to this whole process. I mean, the next really big phase would be to go out and do the commercial carts that are out there and see how much we have in those regards. But that would be post us, you know, properly sizing what we're doing now. At 50% full, it changes the game as to, I mean, you can have two, two yards picked up once a week or, and you put a four yard in. It changes the whole game, just like Greg was saying. And, and also will take some personal touch. You have to, you can't just, you send a letter out, that really does start, start the process, but you better be in follow-up mode, because in this case, it's follow-up, follow-up, follow-up. And properly setting those appointments up and such, like that. To reduce, I would say, I agree with Nancy. I mean, at 50%, we're not, we're actually rate, our bridge is raised, but our expenses actually drop in some way, guys. So it's gonna change the game, and then we're back into a cycle of, of doing this. But the audit in February next year, we'll call it, or March of next year, to say, how well did we do if we changed over, is really a critical follow-up audit. And that's what we did. We confirmed our assumptions based off of what we'd call an audit, root audit. And so doing another root audit to see how well we did when we made the changes will help a lot.
Thank you.
In your search that you did for commercial, did we do a comparison, maybe Scott County landfill, what their charges for commercial or anything locally?
No, I didn't get into landfill fees. I didn't, I didn't do that. I used our own transfer station. As Greg had mentioned, it's all part of our current system, the system that we've registered with the state DNR. If, now that means that the rates that the other providers are, are given, if they're not bringing it to our transfer station, they are taking it to other landfills. So there, we are competing against that rate. It gives us something further to evaluate.
Last year, last year, Laura did provide a statewide map that showed the current rates for, for landfills, and I'm sure that's something we can get again, but.
That's right, yes, she did. She provided us a map with all the area landfills. I think it was just Iowa landfills, though.
Just Iowa, yes.
But some of this stuff's going over to Illinois.
I still think it'd be interesting, if you could actually ask, answer the question, if a current customer leaves the Muscatine system, will they pay more or less to go to a private system?
More.
They're gonna pay more.
He's saying they're gonna pay more regardless.
Depends on how much.
Yeah, they're gonna pay more regardless. Just depends on how many, the, the, how many times they get picked up a week. The frequency makes, makes a difference.
I think that in some ways.
Optimize the pickup.
If we want to break even, fine, but if we'd like to make a few shekels above that, that would be worth talking about.
Yeah, or we get completely out of it.
Which is one of the options that we talked about, right.
I think it was somewhere in the slides. We do even, we want to do a review next year to see, see how these accounts shake out, but we also want to review a lot more frequently than we have, not just when residential rates are increased. So that way, you know, we'll, we'll review again the frequency, the costs, and, you know, even with inflationary increases, we would keep current with the commercial accounts more often than we would with the residential accounts.
So how, when, when will the dump, the automated system be totally, totally spread throughout the entire city of Muscatine? When will that be complete?
We'll have the new piece of equipment.
Talking about six months.
In operation around January 1st.
Okay. I'm just thinking there, you know, there's one, one particular site that the, they're being, getting picked up on a residential deal and there's seven garbage cans there. Now, and it's one, you know, one location, but there's seven garbage cans. Now, when you go back, there, I don't know how they're gonna do with, even if you get the bigger dumpster, the bigger container, I don't know how they're gonna do it unless they go to a dumpster.
Well, in some of the non-dumpster commercial accounts that we want to see if they can go to the, back to, to the carts, until we have all the customers with carts, I mean, there's still a number of, of parts of the community that still could put their own garbage cans out or bags.
Yeah.
And so once, once we're using all carts, it'll be easier to control the commercial, the non-dumpster commercial accounts, too. And some of those, and I really don't know how that's gonna sort out, if they can go to carts, because some of the, just their size of their waste, waste may not allow them to, to do it.
Yeah.
And, and we'd want to make sure that they fit along a residential route as well, so that we're not swinging out of the way.
And some of the commercial, the bin, the cart, cart, we're trying to use that terminology, the carts, we're calling it three different things. The rate for commercial carts is gonna be higher than the residential carts, just because the potential of increased waste in them.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy.
Sure. Greg, or whoever, a big apartment building, do they go by dumpsters and are they a commercial that, that way?
Depends on the, it depends on the account. Some prefer that the, that they get, the individual tenants be, receive individual billings from MPW, so in that case, they're getting the, the residential rate rather than the cart rate. So it, and we have several apartment complexes, so that, you know, that works out in, in our benefit, actually.
But the, I assume.
But they have a dumpster.
I assume they use dumpsters and not.
Yes, right.
24 carts.
Right, but the, but the owner is having the MPW bill, the individuals, individually, rather than including in their rate, their monthly rental.
There's probably 10 or 12 of those accounts, and so the, the analysis comparing things wasn't, we had to jump and get some residential revenues that weren't on Power and Water's list for the, the commercial dumpsters to, to get a fair comparison. And if they're more than four units, our revenue from the four times the residential rate exceeds what the rate would be for the dumpsters. Some of the bigger complexes are.
Are current.
Beneficial to us.
Okay.
This is, it's historically been a, I'm gonna call it a side business, you know, it's less than 2% of the, of the pickups and, and historically, we thought it was probably around eight to 10% of, of the volume. And this, this has never been done where we've singled out the, the commercial dumpster waste. So I, I think it's been a, a, a good exercise to go through it and gives us a lot of good information and to make some decisions going forward. So I really appreciate all of the hard work that the staff has put into it to, to get us to this point. And now there's some policy decisions that need to be made and some recommendations to come forward, so.
Thank you, Nancy.
Thank you, everybody.
Yes.
Greg, Nancy, Greg.
Moving on to comments on our agenda. Bob, do you have anything tonight you'd like to share?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Santos?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Scott?
Yes, I do. I just want to repeat a little bit about our successful bond sale of last week and, Jenny Blankenship mentioned a few things out of the Moody's credit opinion, but I think she went over, over it pretty, pretty rapidly, and I think the citizens need to know, hear it again, what this, the fact that we got such a good rate was not just luck or anything like that. It reflects many years of hard work by Nancy, Greg and council. And I'll just repeat a few of those phrases that they mentioned fairly quickly last week. It reflects the city's trend of positive financial operations, improving reserve levels, manageable debt burden, management's history of conservative budgeting on revenues and expenditures, expenditures, and limited borrowing and with rapid amortization schedules. And then they, finally, they commented that this was the eighth consecutive year of positive balances. So with all you read about cities and states and financial stress these days, Muscatine's not one of them, and it's been a big team effort for several years.
Thank you, Scott. Appreciate that. Alan?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Bill?
Nothing at this time, Your Honor.
Tom?
Nothing this evening, Your Honor.
Mike?
Yes, please, Mayor. In the interest of some communicating, communication, I was at the, your coffee a couple Saturdays ago, and I, I couldn't hear what you had said to a fellow near me, asked you, what is your vision? And I think I kind of heard what you said about families having what they need. Could you, so I do understand, could you, what did you say and what did you mean? Because I couldn't hear it.
I can't remember what I said at that specific.
Well, something to the effect of families having what they need.
Can't remember, I don't know what your, what the context was of the question or anything.
Well, the question was, what is your vision?
What is, well, I can prepare that down the road.
Oh, okay. I, because I couldn't, I don't hear so well.
Sure.
And the fellow who asked it wasn't sure if he heard it correctly either. But I think that would be helpful.
Sure. Steph?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
I just wanted to remind everyone of our next coffee with the mayor, which is gonna be May 21. And I can try to answer your question and talk about that then, Mike?
Well, I'll, I won't be there on the 21st.
Okay.
I'll be in Des Moines, is.
All right. Next, we have a request to enter closed session per Iowa Code 21.51J to discuss property acquisition. Do I have a motion to enter closed session?
Still move, Your Honor. Second.
Thank you. We have to do a roll call on this. Bob?
Aye.
Santos?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Alan?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Ayes, thank you.
Well done, Jim. After Miss Grappas.
Sorry.